Good evening. Today is Thursday, May 5th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting of the Auburn City Council to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in that there are no
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I actually jumped the gun there. Can we have a roll call, please?
I thought it was just me. I set precedent.
We're changing the way we do things.
The, uh, we have a couple, in a minute here, we're gonna have a couple of presentations. And one of them is National Travel and Tourism Week. And because the mayor takes us so seriously, he's still on vacation this week, so he is excused this evening. Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genetino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
And Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
Mr. Clerk, public announcements.
Uh, we do have a couple of announcements this evening, and that is that next week, we have a couple of meetings. Uh, first is on Monday night, we have the monthly meeting of the Civil Service Commission. That is on Monday, May 9th at 6:30 PM. The Auburn Civil Service Commission will meet on the third floor Training Room here at Memorial City Hall. And then on Tuesday, May 10th, we have the monthly meeting of the Historic Resources Review Board. That meeting will be held at 7:00 PM here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall.
Thank you. Moving on to ceremonial presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have two, uh, for Historic Preservation Month and for National Travel and Tourism Week. And in attendance this evening, we have several of our partners throughout the community who are involved in these agencies. Um, and the clerk's gonna make some introductions.
Okay, thank you. I tried to keep track of everybody that I saw coming in tonight. Um, we have several, uh, members of our Historic and Cultural Sites Commission here tonight. But there's a couple of people here in particular that I, I wanna start out with, and that is Judith Bryant up in front and Maxine Albarisi, who's here with Kathy Walker tonight. They were founding members of our Historic and Cultural Sites Commission. Um, it was just a couple of years ago, I think, that that happened. But, uh, uh, they served on the commission for many years when we first started things, so I wanna welcome them here tonight. We also have Pauline Coates Johnson and her daughter, Deidra, are with us this evening, and we, um, uh, thank them for being here as well. Uh, we also have, uh, with us, uh, tonight, Kathy Walker from, uh, she's a member of the Historic Cultural Sites Commission, representing the Community Preservation Committee. She'll be, uh, receiving one proclamation in a little while. Uh, we have, uh, representing the Seward House, Kate Grinstaff this evening, and she's been helping us this year, especially with the, uh, uh, Passport to History Program as it, uh, resurrects itself following, uh, the pandemic. Uh, we also have tonight Ranger Kim from the National Park Service. Ranger Kim was with us here yesterday with the, um, Genesee Elementary Fourth Graders, and that was a lot of fun. We also have, uh, who will be hearing from in a minute here, Anna Wilson, the Superintendent of the Harriet Tubman National Historical Park. Uh, we have Karen Cool from the County Tourism Office with her staff. She'll be, uh, speaking here in just a little while. We have Stephanie DeVito with us, who represents the bid, and the bid is also a member of the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission. So I think I've captured everybody that's in the room tonight from Historic and Cultural Sites. And I guess we'll start with the first proclamation.
Yes, uh, proclamation for Historic Preservation Month?
Thank you. So proclamation from the Office of Mayor Quill, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas this year's theme is People Saving Places, highlighting the contributions of historic place savers, the citizens in our community that pour their time, energy, and resources into protecting historic places they care about, often without recognition. And whereas in 1966, President Lyndon Johnson signed the National Historic Preservation Act into law and formally recognized historic preservation as an important policy of the United States. And whereas since 1996, uh, since 1966, seven local landmarks and two local historic districts have been established in the city of Auburn. And whereas in 1991, the Auburn, New York South Street Area Historic District was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas in 2017, the Harriet Tubman National Historical Park was established. And whereas for the past 31 years, the Community Preservation Committee has been made up of the people saving historically significant places in our community, and we thank them for their dedicated service to Auburn. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the members of council and citizens of Auburn, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Historic Preservation Month here in the city of Auburn.
Thank you. Uh, with us this evening to receive the proclamation is Kathy Walker from the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Walker, if you would meet me at the podium? Joining us this evening, the superintendent from the Harriet Tubman National Park is Anna Wilson. She's gonna give a presentation, um, on, on the progress of the park. Could you come up to the podium, please?
Hi, I'm Anna Wilson. I'm the Superintendent of Women's Rights National Historical Park and Harriet Tubman National Historical Park, and I just wanted to give you some updates on the rehabilitation at Parker Street, on the buildings. Um, and so I have a short presentation, and, uh, it's just a very exciting project that we're undertaking this year. So of course, this is, uh, a relatively recent picture of the church on Parker Street, the Thompson Memorial Amy Zion Church, which was inducted into the Register of Historic Places in 2000. Again, just a little bit more context is the location on Parker Street. And of course, the overview, the Harriet Tubman National Historical Park was established on January 10th, 2017, and that was with the purchase of the property on Parker Street. The park's legislative boundary includes the Harriet Tubman Home, the Harriet Tubman Home for the Aged, the Thompson Memorial Amy Zion Church and Rectory and associated land. And the park's purpose is to preserve and interpret for the benefit and of present and future generations the historical, cultural, and natural resources associated with the life of Harriet Tubman. And of course, the period of significance for the Thompson Memorial Amy Zion Church is from its construction, 1891, through the funeral of Harriet Tubman Davis, held at the church on March of, in March of 1913. So these are just a few pictures of the existing conditions. Um, so we still have the, uh, cornerstone. You see some of the water damage that was done on the interior of the structure. Um, and so all of these things are gonna be addressed in our project. So what to expect in the next year? Uh, we have, uh, we have started the project, and in fact, this week, the contractors were inside the buildings working on asbestos removal of, uh, the furnace areas in both the church and the rectory. Um, so you will be seeing the, the site turn into a construction site. Um, a fence will be, a six-foot perimeter fence will be installed with screening. Um, we will also be including information on the fence. We hope to have, uh, a nice banner that shows some of the information. I'm gonna show you here some of the drawings. Um, and then also have information for visitors that are coming to Harriet Tubman and would like to know more about what is going on at the site. So we're hoping to, to link, um, to our website, our park website, using like a QR code or just the park website, um, address. Uh, the schedule, again, the interior work started this week with asbestos abatement. Um, the schedule is changing regularly because of, um, shortages, because of, uh, the supply chain issues, and just working with our subcontractors. And so things will be kind of fluid as the day-to-day and week-to-week things, but we hope that, uh, by summer of 2023, the project will be completed and the National Park Service will be able to work, actually move into those buildings and have our offices in there. So some contemporary images, and thank you, Pauline, for sharing some of your images with us. Um, this is from the Historic Structures Report for the church. Um, we have a couple of images that you can see. Um, the Aunt Harriet's funeral, uh, photograph actually shows the, the window that we are going to be moving. So one of the goals of this project was to make the facade actually look like it did during, um, when Harriet Tubman was alive and, uh, going to the church. It had been moved over about eight inches in order to make a wider staircase on the inside of the building, but that didn't happen until about 1920. Um, and so we're hoping to move that back, so that way the facade is, um, it, it looks equal on both sides, and it matches the steeple that we're actually going to put back in place as well. And, uh, and you can see on the interior picture, some of the stenciling on the wall. Um, we're going to be putting back a lot of the historic stenciling inside the, the chapel, um, and also the, the dais. This is just a, a look at the, um, exterior, how we're going to make it accessible. So everything that's going, um, on the exterior, the building, um, and the ramp, it's going to be on top of the historic cement. So they are removing some of the later additions, but the historic cement and the historic fabric that was there when Harriet was alive will still be intact. Again, this is a drawing of, um, some of the work that will be done. Um, the, the 12-foot spire will be reconstructed with lightning protection included. Um, that is, uh, an absolute must. Um, oh, I forgot. I was going to add some information. Um, the bell inside the tower is going to be removed and taken to Women's Rights National Historical Park for cleaning and some preservation treatment before it is reinstalled. And so, um, that'll be in, in, uh, in all of the louvers, and everything in the steeple will be reconstructed and restored. Um, we are installing new and salvage novelty siding, repair, and paint the clapboard siding trim and associated components. So everything is, again, going back to the way it was, um, as best as we can figure it out from our research. We are also, again, reinstalling the window in the historic location and infilling the wall and providing replica historic panel doors. Um, so again, it's, it's a, it's as complete restoration of the exterior as we possibly can do. This is the interior. Um, so just, again, we are installing reproduction altar rails, um, both around the altar and the dais. Um, and, uh, we will be bringing everything back to the way it was. So refinishing the floors, they had some paint on them, so we'll be taking the paint off, refinishing them. All of the, um, register grates will be taken out and stored in our, as, um, preservation materials in our collection, and we will be putting back replicas in the building itself. So again, preserving some of the original fabric, um, and being able to use replicas that will be able to be walked on and, and we don't have to worry about damaging them. Again, this is some of the stenciling, so you can see there's a couple of different campaigns of stenciling and paint inside the building. Um, the majority of what we're going back to is this pink with the darker red stenciling. There is a really amazing, uh, Greek stenciling that is in green, that is a later, uh, addition to the building, and we're hoping to, excuse me, we're hoping to have a couple of windows put in, so that way we can see the original paint, the, and the later additions to the stenciling and the decor. And again, that is looking at the evolution of the congregation at the church. So we want to make sure that we're not just focusing on, you know, the time period that Harriet Tubman was, was living in, in the church. We want to also look at the evolution of the congregation and the community around the church. And so this is one way that we're able to do that, is by including some of the later additions to the church and be able to interpret them. And so again, you can see, um, where some of the arabesque, arabesque stenciling will be included in the, um, in the foyer, in the vestibule, with the reproduction doors. And then the stenciling will be, uh, in the, uh, in the chapel itself, in the sanctuary. And this is a really, this is a really exciting thing that we're able to do. Um, we were actually able to install a time-lapse camera inside the building. And so right now, the plan is, is that the time-lapse camera will be taking pictures about three times a day, and we will be hosting those pictures on our website. Um, so EarthCam was able to do that for us. We're working with them to also put out another camera on the exterior. So again, we'll be hosting those cameras, so that way the public can see the, the progress of the preservation of the inside and outside. It's going to be a pretty fast-moving project, trying to get this all done in a year. So they're gonna be working on the inside and outside at the same time. So we're, we're still in the process of, um, installing the exterior camera. Uh, that one's a little bit trickier, because we had to work with an ISAG to put it on a utility pole across the street. And so it, we have a couple of, uh, just a couple more steps before we're able to put it in, but the, the one inside the building is there, and, um, pretty soon, we'll be, we'll be able to start taking pictures. Um, so we just, one thing that we, we were able to put it in a really good spot, but then the contractors came back and said, "Well, you know, we're gonna kinda need you to move that around." So now we have to make a tripod to put it on, to be able to move it around as they're working, um, so that way we can accommodate their fast-moving work. So I'm really excited to be able to have that available for everybody to see the progress. Um, the rectory, again, this is just a, a drawing. One of the, um, one of the things that we're still working out the details on are the, uh, accessible lift. So we will not have a ramp or, um, at this time, but we will actually have a mechanical lift that will probably be, um, to the, the side of the stairs. And so that is, that is able to be used by anybody, um, and it'll take you up to the, the porch level, and then you'd be able to come in the front door. And that's also the way that you would leave the building. And so here are just some of the existing conditions inside the, the rectory. Um, they're in the process of still cleaning out, getting the asbestos removal. We've done some extensive pest mediation. Um, we had a few, you know, few squirrels, a few birds, uh, but we were able to clear everything out and, and start cleaning things up and get ready for the contractors. Again, this is just showing you, uh, the possibility of where the lift will be, and we're keeping the interior intact. We're not really gonna be moving any walls very much. Um, the one thing that we are gonna do is, is create this ADA accessible bathroom. So that's gonna be, again, this, this, uh, the goal for this structure is for the first floor to be a visitor contact station. So we plan to, um, have some temporary exhibits in this, in this location. Um, in the future, this may be a spot where we have, um, a bookstore or other visitor amenities. Um, we're still in the planning process of that. In fact, this year, we are able to start our foundation document, which is one of our beginning, um, our new park plans. And so this captures, you know, what we are, what, what's important, and where do we go from there. And then this is just the second floor, which is gonna be our offices, multi-use area. Um, and, and we'll be very excited to be able to actually move into the structure and have park staff available, um, throughout the week. I, I plan on having, uh, an office in this building as well, so I can come and stay in Auburn a few days a week. And it'll be, it'll just be great to have that ranger presence, um, at this site. And that's, that's all I have for right now. Again, we're in the very beginning stages of the, of the project, but we're really excited to get it going, and work is started, and so you'll start seeing it look more like a, a construction zone very soon. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Wilson. Counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Kent?
Yes. Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation, Superintendent. I just wondered if, um, you were able to, as part of this process, to discover and then archive the history of, for instance, you looked, you know, we looked at the, um, the walls and the different generations of, um, decor in the buildings. Do you know who the artists were or any, you know? I, I don't need to know. I'm just wondering if that's something that you try to capture, so that you can tell the story of the building itself?
Yes.
Including, you know, the people and everybody that was involved with it, but also the actual, you know, I noticed that it looked like an arts and crafts interior in the rectory. It just looked very interesting, and I'm hoping some of that was available to, to sort of capture and have that be part of the story.
Yeah. Yeah, so we had a conservator, uh, do an extensive Historic Structures Report, which is where I got some of these pictures and information. Um, and so I would look at that, that report, and I'm, it was extensively cited. Um, so, and that's available. That's a public document for anybody that would like to see it. Um, and yeah, Rebecca Krieger did a very good job.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Deidra Stanford, a member of the Harriet Tubman Church here in Auburn. Uh, Pastor Price is the minister there. I just wanted to know that in the church, in the back, um, where the choir stand is, there's a cross and a crown.
Yes.
Is that gonna stay there, that image, or is it gonna be replaced?
I'd have to double-check. That was something I was trying to look at, the construction documents today, and I couldn't find the specific language about whether or not that mural will be staying. And so I definitely, I can look into it and get back to you.
I just remember it as a child going there, so, thank you.
There also was a dove in the hill across the ground with, uh, let's see, stones, broken stones in the ground.
Hold on, I think I have a better picture earlier. This right here. Yeah, it's kinda hard to see.
Yeah.
But I can definitely, I can definitely check the construction documents and see what's going to be happening to that, but the one benefit is, is that this structure has been fully, fully documented. In fact, we have 3D scans of the entire inside, so Matterport was a, a contractor we worked with, and they go inside the building and take a full 3D scan, so you can virtually go inside the building and see exactly what it was. Um, so everything will definitely be, um, documented, but I can double-check.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody else from council have any questions?
Superintendent Wilson, thanks again for being here. Um, you know, the last few years, I've done a lot of traveling across the country, and I've gone to a lot of historical parks, national historical parks. And, you know, the conclusion I've come to is that there really is no higher honor in this country than to be recognized by the National Park Service. And, you know, I look out tonight, and there's some people in the front row that were heavily involved in that for a long time, getting this recognition, and this shows that we're getting closer to where we need to be. Um, so I'm excited about it. I know the community's excited about it, and thank you, Ranger Kim, and the rest of your staff for, for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, it is an honor to be able to, you know, interpret Harriet Tubman's story and her legacy. And, you know, I, I don't see another place that, you know, it, it's just such an honor. And so I'm so excited to be able to move forward and see progress on this. I know it's been a long time coming. And the, our hopes are that by next summer, everything will be done and ready and open to the public.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Our second proclamation this evening is for National Travel and Tourism Week. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Um, where, whereas travel has a critical role on New York State and the nation's economic prosperity, and whereas a robust travel industry has provided significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $2 billion in economic output in 2021, with $910 billion spent directly by travelers in the United States. And whereas travel has been the foundation of healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 12 million jobs in 2021. And whereas in 2020, tourism generated $87.1 million annually, was responsible for the employment of 1,296 people in Cuyahoga County. Included in these totals are 11.6 million in state and local taxes, and provided $383 in tax relief per Cuyahoga County household. And whereas meetings, events, and incentives, travel has always been a core business function that helps companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments. And whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creative, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. And whereas business, businesses and workers in the travel industry were some of the first and hardest hit by the economic crisis resulting from the pandemic, and whereas the United States travel industry suffered unparalleled losses amid the COVID-19 pandemic, with a $755 billion, two-year direct travel spending loss throughout the end of 2021. And whereas 3 million of the 9 million direct travel jobs were lost at the onset of the pandemic, we remain at 75% of pre-pandemic levels, with 2.3 million travel jobs remain lost in 2021. And whereas 2022 is Harriet Tubman's bicentennial celebration, and the Cuyahoga County Office of Tourism is working to position Auburn, New York as Harriet Tubman's chosen hometown. And whereas the spirit of travel is a necessary and prominent component for our return to everyday life from the pandemic and must be supported and protected. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Auburn, do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022, as National Travel and Tourism Week here in the city of Auburn.
Thank you. Uh, with us this evening to accept the proclamation is Karen Cool, Executive Director of the Cuyahoga County Office of Tourism. Ms. Cool, will you meet me at the podium, please?
Um, thank you very much. I, uh, the, the relationship and the collaboration that the Tourism Office has with the City of Auburn is something that we're very proud of. Uh, it definitely makes our work a lot easier. Uh, but beyond that is the collaboration, the partnership, the support. The tourism industry is a very diverse industry and incorporates so many different industries, you know, the lodging, uh, the food and beverages, the wine and beer, and beer industry, transportation, uh, home rentals. So as diverse as the product is, the partnerships are just as diverse, and the type of, uh, organizations that we get to partner with are very critical and very important. I've been in this position for about three and a half years, I think, now, and I gotta tell you, in all the places that I've worked in tourism, none has had the open collaboration and partnerships as I've received here. Not just in the city of Auburn, uh, Cuyahoga County, the Finger Lakes Region, and to the New York State level. It's been such a pleasure, my job and my, you know, I feel, I don't know if you've heard the, the term, um, lawn mower parenting, you know, when the parents kinda clean the path in front of the kids so that their lives is easier. I feel like my position in this, uh, industry has been, uh, supported by, uh, lawn mowing, uh, organizations, because I definitely feel that they have cleared the path. So I look forward to continue positioning Auburn, New York as Harriet Tubman's chosen hometown. This is why she chose to be here. This is why you're here, and it's been an honor of working with you and participating and being able to elevate your voices, not just as descendants of Harriet Tubman, but as the organizations that continue and honor her legacy. The Seward House Museum, the Harriet Tubman Home, the Howland Stone Store Museum, uh, Port Hill Cemetery. Hill Cemetery, the Equal Rights Heritage Center. These are all locations that we have been positioning as actual locations that people can come and visit worldwide to continue learning and following the Harriet Tubman legacy. The partnership with the National Park Service is inspiring and I see it growing. And I love when Superintendent Anna said, "We will see more presence, we will see more rangers." Because the business is coming, the tourists are coming, and we look forward to continuing these partnerships. So on behalf of the Tourism Office, we only have one other member of my staff with me today and that's Karen Casada. We're Karen Square, Karen Cool, Karen Casada. Don Lebusheski is our marketing assistant. She is also on vacation enjoying National Travel Tourism Week. And Don Claire, I could not do what I do without her support and unfortunately she's dealing with COVID at home, so she wasn't able to join us. So, thank you. We're on for a good road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we're going to get an update on our Market New York grant as part of the city's Historical and Cultural Sites Commission. Our city clerk, Mr. Mason, can you give that update?
Sure, thank you. As members of council know, we have been very fortunate here in the city with our Historic and Cultural Sites Commission, with all of the work that they have done over many years. And over the last five years with the onset of the Equal Rights Heritage Center, we've also had the opportunity to benefit from a partnership with New York State, Empire State Development, I Love New York program through the Market New York Initiative. And we have successfully completed our first two Market New York grants over the last four years and we are currently in the process of just getting started on our third Market New York grant. And with us this evening, we have our representatives from our contractor TGW Studio, Lisa Cribs and Beal St. George, who will be coming up. And they're going to give us a quick update on where we are at with the next round of the Market New York program and stuff that we will be seeing happening in the very immediate future. So you'll need to set yourself up on the laptop there.
Great. Thanks Chuck. So good to see so many of you for, it's been so long, Karen and Stephanie, Teri.
Yeah, let's see, maybe we can do this. How about that? Nice, all right. Hey, everybody, it's so good to be here. Again, I'm Lisa Cribs, I'm a co-founder of TGW Studio. And this is our head strategist, Beal St. George, who's here today. Both of us have had the honor to work very closely here in Auburn with several of you and, and, you know, more specifically with the Equal Rights Heritage Center. But, you know, it's been, just to kind of piggyback off of what Karen was saying, having an opportunity to work with and, you know, represent the HCSC in so many different ways and different partners is so, it seems very unique in terms of Auburn being a small city and just having so much cultural relevance and historical significance and everybody just working together. It's, it's just a very, it's, it's an honor to be a part of. And so we're here tonight from TGW Studio and just wanted to walk you through what's been going on this past year. And here we are in 2022 and, you know, what's, what's ahead, what we're planning on and how you'll be hearing from us. So Beal and I are just going to kind of go back and forth on a few of these different slides. But we wanted to kind of touch on the fact that, you know, we all had a lot of challenges, especially those of you that work specifically in the tourism industry and arts and culture. There were a lot of implications because of the pandemic. But, you know, the overarching goal with the work that we do with Chuck and, and the larger team at hand is really to just greater educate and spread the awareness of the importance, the cultural importance of Auburn and the sites here within. And so really just sort of a theme of carrying on. This time last year was an opportunity for us to really focus on and place a greater importance on the digital campaigns and developing important creative assets so that there's a lot of, that we have to work with this year that we're really excited to give you a little bit of a peek tonight at. But it was a really important time to really strategize and be able to look at the larger picture for when things started to clear up and folks are starting to, you know, think about maybe planning and doing a little bit more traveling and there's a little bit of excitement and momentum there. We're excited to, you know, really try to take advantage of that. Beal, you want to talk to this one?
Sure. So last year, in the fall of 2021, we were really excited to launch Harriet's Lantern Trail, which featured each of the historical HCSC sites and, and really gave us an opportunity to tell new stories or little-known stories that, you know, Auburnians might be familiar with, some folks might be familiar with, but really not, not your, just uncover new things about, about Auburn, about the history here. And so we were very excited to launch this program. It continues to be a focus for us and we'll talk more about that. But just as an example, even though we launched it in the fall, we were still excited to see a 300% increase in site traffic related to this campaign. So it's a, it's a digital wayfinding campaign. People use their phones at each of the H, at, at each of the stops around the city. There's a sticker with a code and you open your camera and you point it at the, the code and it takes you to a page that tells you something new that you might not have known about the place that you're standing right then. So it's interactive, it's digital, and it's completely free and it's completely organic, right? You can find a sticker wherever you might be in the city. So we're really excited about how that performed and I think we'll talk a little bit more about where we're going to take that this year too. But just an example of, of how we were able to use the digital program to, even in the midst of the pandemic, make successful interactions in the city with the historical sites. Yeah, just some examples of some more creative ways that we're telling the story of the history here, shining a light on Auburn, the ability to walk in Harriet Tubman's footsteps through these amazing sites and histories that are here. Visitor guides, of course, so learning about the history, but you're also getting access to the city, its food, its drink, all the things you can do here beyond just the historical sites, what you might want to, how you might want to enhance your trip. We were very excited to produce both a physical version of this visitor guide, but then also a digital version that people could download. So again, it allowed people to, we acquired a bunch of contacts of people who had learned about Auburn through the internet, through our, our ad program. And they said, "Yes, I want to learn more about this city. I want to download this visitor guide or I'd like a copy sent to my home." So again, just increasing the accessibility of Auburn and of the, the history here to a broader audience. That led both to the email traffic, but also to a lot of increased site traffic on the websites as well.
Anything to add? Yeah, I think just in terms of what worked well, you know, during the, the time where the pandemic seemed to be the heaviest and the darkest days, was really still an opportunity to see that there was curiosity, there was energy, there was interest, there is interest in, in what's going on here in Auburn and with, with all of the important sites. And so, you know, we just wanted to provide a few examples of a little bit of a brush stroke or, or a window into what is to come and what we're really planning on leaning into much more heavily with the promise of things like the Harriet's Lantern Trail, re-releasing that this spring, right now, when people are ready, when people are excited to get out and go do something different and to come into town to do that. Again, just general tourism, language to get people excited and interested. This has been a, a key focus as well, just with all of the opportunity from food and beverage, arts and cultural institutions here in town. This, this coupled with, you know, everything, all things Harriet and the bicentennial. This year, we're, we're in a really good place, there's a lot to talk about. Also, as most of you, I am sure, are well aware of the Brave Brew's Festival, huge success. We were excited and honored to be a big part of that planning and the creative representation for it. And, you know, just excited to see it continue to evolve and be an important part of, of Auburn's success. Yep, and then we'll just talk again for a couple more minutes about, I think we actually hit on most of these points. But, you know, again, in summary, a really strong and steady increase in the digital metrics that we were finding and the different tactics that we were testing out and shipping, you know, with in-person travel during most, most of the year being so limited. Again, that strong presence digitally was so important and it was really encouraging for us to see that, that level of interest was there. And now we'll talk a little bit about what's ahead.
Sure. Go for that.
Yes, so as Chuck mentioned, we're just starting up this, this next year of the Market New York Grant. Of course, the primary focus here is the bicentennial, 200 years of Harriet Tubman. So shining a light on this American hero, on her life, her story. So that is a huge tremendous focus of this next year across all of the tactics that we'll be using. Just another example of some of the ways that we're threading the story of, again, coming to Auburn, getting away for the weekend, but also learning more, being part of the history here, learning that history lives on here. Couple of tactics, just to get, just to name a few of these things. You know, there's so much going on in this year and next year. There's the general sense, I think, as Lisa was saying, more folks are willing to travel. We have a lot to focus on, right? So some of the things here, of course, the bicentennial being a huge focus. As part of that, re-releasing the wayfinding journey that we launched, Harriet's Lantern Trail, the historical and cultural sites, features, spotlights, all of their events related to the bicentennial, focusing also on local tourism. So having Auburnians as ambassadors for this city, making sure that they know about the historical and cultural sites here as well, that they can access them on their own, but also direct newcomers to visit them. We've got 100 years of sound on film, lot pride, of course, Juneteenth, both in 2022 and in 2023. And then continued awareness of the Equal Rights Heritage Center and all of the locus of, of information that it offers to visitors here. Just an example, you don't need to look at all of the, the text here, but this is just each of the tactics that we're planning out, how we plan to deploy them over the year. So really looking forward to digging into what is a really big and also multifaceted project here in Auburn.
Yeah, sure. And then from a purely tactical standpoint, keep your eye out, we're going to be doing some billboards throughout the region, Finger Lakes area and here in Auburn. More digital media creation, this is huge, such an important piece. And just continuing to, to, you know, be boots on the ground and just capturing really important content that happens this spring and this summer and also work with what we have. The re-release of Harriet's Lantern Trail, we're really excited about. Again, people want to be out and about, they want to be outside, people are comfortable outside, really taking advantage and letting people sort of experience that organically. Really rolling our sleeves up a bit more, focusing on email marketing programs with the Auburn Travel Guide success and just kind of a little window into that last year. Huge opportunity there to continue to grow that subscriber base. Email subscribes are, in our industry, we like to kind of call them kind of gold and they're very, very valuable. I'm sure everyone's inbox is here, they're protective of them and it's important who's talking to you and you care about what you're getting information on. And so this continues to evolve and be a really important program specific here to Auburn tourism. Paid social and Google advertising and digital marketing, this always goes hands in hand with anything organic or any other traditional type of advertising we're doing. We just need to be where everybody else is and we've been able to do a really good job of that. And then as Beal sort of touched on, really trying to focus on a local influencer campaign. We think that that's really important to talk to several of you that are in this room right now, I'm sure, to really find the great folks that know how to sing the song of the importance of Auburn and everything that it has to offer. And that's such an important thing to be able to illustrate that to a larger population. And that's what we've got coming up. Thank you so much. Happy to answer any questions if there is time.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? No questions? Counselor Cuddy?
More of a comment, just to see the, the depth and scope of what you are doing, the amount of planning involved, the research that continued to happen during COVID, I just think will, will pay off in the long run. It's just really good to see how, how it's, you've, you've laid it out for us and just really excited to see and to continue to work, work with you. So, so very exciting. Thank you for your...
Thank you so much, yes. We're, we're very excited as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you both for being here and taking the time to give us the update.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
I just want to make a, a comment real quick. I've been on, this is my seventh year of being on council and the entire time I've been on council, I've been the, the council's representative on the Historical and Cultural Sites Commission. And I look out and I see a lot of our, our team here. And, you know, this commission's been around for a long time and I, it's been a pleasure for me to work to continue to further that mission. And I was jotting down some notes of some things that have happened in the last few years. Establishment of a national park, the construction of a visitor center, this marketing campaign, several DRI projects for commission members, celebrating Pride Month, celebrating Juneteenth. I think we should all, as a community, be proud of, of those progresses. And it really is a collective effort. Karen, you said it best, partnerships, and it doesn't work if we don't work together. So thank you all for your passion, your dedication, and your commitment. And we're going to be moving on. Give all of our guests a chance to, to escape if you'd like to. You're welcome to stay too.
Okay, moving on to the public to be heard. Mr. Clerk?
At this point in time, we will open the public to be heard. A portion of the council meeting residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody wishing to be heard?
My name is Andrew Bishop and my address is 84 Grand Ave, right here in Auburn, New York. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Auburn City Council, ladies and gentlemen of the City of Auburn. As we were speaking last time, to the mercury somehow mysteriously appearing in the lake, where is it all coming from? As I, as I stated, I was looking to have a core sample done right there on the inlet because that could date it, sometimes they can date it within a week to a month when it first started and what the load levels are. So I went down there and speak to some people about getting permission to go down there just to see, you know. Oh, in the meantime, they're telling me how they're, they get a shock their well all the time because of the E. coli getting into it. And without me even stating that, they said it's directly because the sewage treatment plant in Maraby was being overloaded from the prison. So they had no problem with me going down there if I find the company to do it, it's not that expensive. The funniest thing though was, once I really knew I had something solid, I, I turned to the state and actually turned them in because, you know, it's costing the taxpayers there in the village 100,000 a year, as they say, for the... as they say, for the leak they cannot find. That leak costs $100,000 a year, because that's pumped water chlorinated. So I turned it over to the state, they got back to me, they're not stealing enough for them to worry about it. But literally, that's what they said. I was stunned. Well, maybe it is time for a class action lawsuit. Like I said before, I'd rather not, that's just our taxpayer dollars, hard at work. And or a quai tan, that's Latin for on behalf of, or in behalf of the United States government. You see, because they're breaking EPA laws, nobody seems to want to notice that. The rest of my time, I will devote very quickly to one last thing, very quickly. Julie Monson, y'all remember her? Yeah, I wrote the FBI and asked them, what's going on with our DNA testing there with Mr. Bootleman? They said, who? We have no record of any DNA testing being done, and that FOIL request shows that nothing had ever been done. So when I went down to Tomato Fest, he, right in front of me, he laughs at me with his buddies and says, don't worry, nobody listens to him. I said, hot dog. I tried to get on that one website on Facebook with Julie Monson with her friend down there in Florida, I was banned. I started up my own, just to show people, here's the FOIL request from the FBI. Shadow banned, I'm like, wow, that's some hardcore stuff there. But I'll still keep talking about her, she was an Auburn citizen, she was murdered. And her killer walks the street, and no DNA testing is done, and the district attorney, the citizen, the post standard, none of the TV stations.
Mr. Bishop, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, you're at three minutes.
I was just mentioning, they wouldn't refuse to print the letters, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you again, ladies and gentlemen of the Auburn City Council, for your time.
Is there anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay, we'll close the first publicly heard, move on to approval of the meeting minutes from April 14th, 2022. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Discussion, corrections, clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Moving on to City Manager's Report, Mr. Deiger?
Thank you, Counselor, just an update on our ARPA-funded small business loan program that we've kicked off in collaboration with SEDA. There was an application period that closed on Saturday, April 30th. On April 30th, the total number of applications received was 52. So right at the moment, SEDA staff is reviewing those applications, make sure all the required information is included. And then we'll follow up with committee reviews of those completed applications to rank the applications and move forward with the awards process. So that's going to be a few weeks out, but it is a work in progress. Currently, the city is accepting bids for the revolving loan sidewalk program, responses are due back on May 9th. We're also accepting bids for the CDBG sidewalk program. Those bids are due back on May 24th. More details are available on the city webpage under the tab Bids and RFPs. And a couple of project updates, work on the State Street Plaza is progressing. Today, a major milestone of pouring the actual concrete walking surface within the boundaries of the plaza took place, that'll continue through tomorrow, I believe. And some of the landscaping and plantings has also begun within that space. So we're nearing the end of that project. And last season, last fall, we talked about the replacement of street lamps along South Street, and you may have noticed that that project has begun, so that'll be ongoing for several weeks, I assume, but it did start this week.
Thank you. Before we move on to reports from members of council, any questions for Mr. Deiger? Counselor Castro?
Residents who are wishing to put their sidewalks on their taxes, is that program closed?
No, it's still available.
So if somebody calls and wants to do it, they don't go on a waiting list?
I'm not sure what the, what's going on right at the moment with that, but I believe that it's still funded and still available.
Because I've gotten some phone calls that people are interested in doing it, and they said the program is no longer open. And I was just wondering, it's a great program, we should open to everybody. I mean, we're.
Billy, can you speak to that, if any chance? Or Jenny? Let's see what Billy's got.
The first program, the existing program is just about full, and that's why we're advertising right now for the revolving loan sidewalk that we're opening up Monday. So in approximately two weeks, we'll be back again, looking for the award. We knew the other one was expiring, so we got the other contract out. So they may have to wait a couple of weeks to look at what the new prices will be. But the existing program, I think we've got all the applications in, and we've got like maybe two that are on a waiting list. And as soon as the new program starts, then we'll be able to let them sign up on the new one.
Like I said, such a program like that, it's too bad we have to even shut it down to anybody. I mean, if the residents are willing to pay for their sidewalks.
Well, it's, it's still going, it's just that the one, the existing program had a certain dollar value. That dollar value is just about completely full, it's encumbered, and now it's time to start a new program. That's why we have another one.
Right, I understand that, but.
And it's still open, right, for.
Will the second program fill up?
No, probably, it'll probably be, it'll probably take us about a year and a half on the new program, starting Monday, to go through the dollars that we're anticipating. It took about a year and a half from the last time to fill up the existing program. And so then, you know, they just might have to wait two weeks to get an estimate with the current contract, because the other one is just, is completely full, and I think there's two on a waiting list.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lubian, just for clarification, there's a certain dollar amount, then it closes, and we put it back out to bid, so it's not the same contractor perpetually?
That's correct.
So this is to kind of keep, hopefully keep prices down, there's some competition there?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Reports from members of council? Moving on to Financial Resolution Number 42 of 2022, authorizing various budget transfers. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor LaCastro, seconded by Counselor Cuddy?
Financial Resolution 42 of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn staff is requesting various operating and non-operating budget transfers for fiscal year 2021-22, as outlined in Attachment A, and whereas there is no fund balance being requested for the transfers, and now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, that one, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the transfers in Attachment A for the 2021-22 fiscal year, and two, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, any discussion? Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Council Resolution Number 43 of 2022, authorizing a public hearing for the City Manager's recommended budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor LaCastro?
Council Resolution 43 of 2022 be resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, that does hereby authorize a public hearing be held before the Council of the City of Auburn on the 19th day of May 2022 at 5:00 PM at Council Chambers, First Floor, Memorial City Hall, Auburn, New York, concerning the City Manager's recommended budget for the fiscal year 2022-23. Be it further resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise the resolution in the official newspaper of the city in accordance with the governing state and local requirements.
Thank you, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
And Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Carry.
Award Resolution Number 44 of 2022, awarding a bid for the 2022 Road Improvement Program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor LaCastro, seconded by Counselor Kent?
Award Resolution 44 of 2022, whereas on April 21st, 2022, the Auburn City Council passed Bond Resolution Number 1 of 2022 to fund the 2022 Road Improvement Program. And whereas the 2022 Road Improvement Program involves streets to be improved by asphalt resurfacing, including partial reconstruction, patching, crack sealing, micro-surfacing, milling the road surfaces, and installing asphalt truing and leveling the top courses. And whereas on April 26th, 2022, bids were open for the 2022 Road Improvement Program, and the following bid was received, one, Paul F. Vitale Incorporated of Auburn, New York, And whereas it is necessary at the Auburn City Council Award, the 2022 Road Improvement Program to the lowest responsible bidder, namely Paul F. Vitale Incorporated, which has submitted a low bid of $1,600,535. Now therefore be resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby award the contract for the 2022 Road Improvement Program. Be it further resolved, the cost of the resolution, the amount of $1,600,535 is to be charged as follows. $1,370,535 is to be charged to the 2022 Road Improvement Program account, HA5110440KX. $125,000 is to be charged to the Water Fund account, number HF8340440JZ, for repairs to pavement, valve covers, lawn areas, sidewalks, and curbs. $30,000 is to be charged to revolving loan sidewalk account, number HA549744001, for property owner curb and sidewalk installations. And $75,000 is to be charged to 107 State Street Project account, number HA8672440SS, to mill and pave on State Street in front of the Auburn Public Plaza. And be it further resolved, that the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents necessary in reference to the award of the bid.
Thank you, any discussion, questions? Counselor LaCastro?
Only one bidder?
Yes.
Are we legal to award it with one bidder?
Yes.
Next, one other question, $30,000 for?
Counselor LaCastro, could you ask your questions again, just so the answers are on the record?
Okay. One bidder?
Yes, only one bidder responded.
Right, and we are legal to award that with one bidder?
We had it advertised in both the local paper and in the Syracuse newspapers. We had the bid period over three weeks, just one person responded with a bid.
The next question, this $30,000 to be charged revolving loan sidewalk account?
That's correct.
Is that work that he's doing on the contract?
It's basically when we send out, we will send out letters to every resident up and down, every one of the streets on the road program, and we'll ask them, do you want some curbing or sidewalk done at these prices? And if so, and if they're current on their taxes, they can put it on their taxes over a five-year period, just like the regular revolving loan sidewalk. But because the contractor, it's a road program contractor there, a lot of times people want to get the curb done at the same times the road program is. So we'll send out a letter, and usually we anticipate, usually we have about $30,000 worth of participation from area adjoining property owners on the street that want us to do a curb for them while we're there with the road program. So that's, that's why that $30,000 is there, because that money will be charged to the revolving loan sidewalk program, sidewalk and curbs.
What happens if you get a lot of interest and it goes over $30,000?
Well, we just make an adjustment. I mean, the, basically, we're asking council to award this contract to Vitale for $1,600,000. I mean, those are just estimated amounts, some run over, some run under, that they'll just, you know, adjust them at the end of the contract. And, but we'll only spend the $1,600,000 unless we come back to you for a change order.
The only reason I asked about the $30,000, you know, you're not going to get much for $30,000 in this day and age.
The, the prices, the bid prices on this curbing is, went up substantial this year. And so I don't think we'll have quite as much participation as we had in previous years. So I think $30,000 is probably a good guesstimate.
Thank you.
I'll say it, Counselor LaCastro?
I'll say it, thank you.
Counselor Cuddy?
Mr. Lubian, how many, what percentage of people take advantage of the curbing when offered? Just in general, do you have a, do you have a sense of that?
We may get anywhere from 10 to 30, depending on what street. Some streets we're doing already have curbs, so those people probably aren't going to take out the existing curb, just put another curb in.
But it's like a 10 to 20% take advantage of this?
Yeah, not much more than, you know, probably, you know, less than 20%, yes, that's correct. This year here, it's probably going to be 5 to 10%, you know.
And you think because it's, the price has increased?
Yes. I think the unit price is substantial, prices have gone up, and the bids gone up. And the one thing I probably should have put in the resolution, our engineering estimate on this job was $1,600,000. And, you know, we're only like $500 off our estimate. So, I mean, this, this was a very good bid, and we're very happy with the total bid, and we'll get the work done for that price.
And to Counselor LaCastro's point, is it the fact that it's so competitive, or are there so many jobs out there? Why would we only get one?
I, you know, usually we have Sioux Coop bids on it, Villager, sometimes Nardozzi does. I think last year we had three bidders, some years we get as many as four to seven. But it always, the local contractors that we have in the Auburn area, obviously, that's to their advantage, they don't have all the trucking distance, that's in their backyard, they can do it more efficiently, and they can combine this with other jobs they got in the area. So we tend to get a local contractor for the road program. The nice thing is, is that because we go out on a website, everybody that's interested in the project, that picks up plans, specs, they're on the bidder's list. So each bidder doesn't know if those people are going to respond with a bid or not, so they keep their pencils sharp. But you're right, in this climate, there seems to be a lot of work out there, and the prices are up. You know, I don't know what's going to happen in future jobs, hopefully we'll still get competitive bids.
And you mentioned that we advertise in the Citizen and the Post.
And.
That's not, that's not the only thing we do, or, yeah, the Syracuse.
And it's on the Dodge Reports, they pick it up in the construction of things. And, and all those bidding agencies have client, their customers, and they notify everybody of these jobs, upcoming jobs. And we always try to allow like three weeks bidding period, that gives enough time for these, like Dodge Reports, to be pick up this potential job and notify all of their, what do you call it, customers, clients that are in the construction industry. So if anybody really wants to bid on it, they usually know of the project. A lot of times, on some of the jobs where we don't know if we're going to get a lot of bidders or not, we look at previous bid list, and we'll send a copy of the advertisement for bids that goes in a newspaper, and send that out directly to them by email, so they, they're aware of it immediately. They don't even have to wait for the, those agencies to pick it up and notify them.
All right, great, thank you.
Counselor LaCastro?
Is the program completed from last year?
No, we have a little bit of money left over. We're going to do Tabor Drive, which we held off because we were doing that South Street, and that was the detour. And we're also going to be doing Lafayette Place, you know, and that was torn up with the gas electric and all their patches. So now we'll be able to do, we have enough money to left over to do those two streets. So we're going to do those two streets with last year's money, and that'll finish up the program. We have a little extra money there to do patches, and we usually save some money, because when we're going to do a micro-surfacing this year, we'll, we'll do any crack sealing that's necessary if we're going to, and then we do the patches, and then we're ready for the micro-surfacing. So we try to save a little patch money so that the previous road program contractor can jump out and get those done, so we can get right out on the road program and procedures right in the beginning of the year.
Thank you.
Okay?
Counselor Kent?
I shared my colleague's concerns about the one bid. The fact that it came in so close to what your, what your forecast was, makes me feel a little better. I think that this company's had a road program for the last five years?
Yeah, I think between them and when Rizzo was bidding, those were the two competitive ones, the local companies. Rizzo hasn't been in at least three years, so, yeah, I would say they have, they have had it at least four out of the last five, maybe even five in a row.
And, you know, one of the concerns that we've brought up, the public has brought up, is the timeframe of getting this done. It's gotten better. I will give credit, it's gotten better. But, you know, I noticed a couple of things last year where they had done work on some streets, and they didn't finish driveway aprons, they didn't finish sidewalks until the end of the summer, and that stuff was left open for several weeks. I would ask that we ask them to pay a little more attention to that and button that stuff up. The other thing that I've brought up, and I don't know if this falls on you, or if it falls on Ms. Haynes because of codes or the manager, but their staging area, and I understand they have to have staging area, but their staging area between Cottage and Seymour is an embarrassment. And I would ask that we communicate with them and ask them to at least keep it presentable, understanding they have to have a staging site. I'm not being unrealistic that they shouldn't be staging in the city, but they can at least keep it tidy. I mean, there's people that live there, there's people that travel through there. I would appreciate if, if they would take that into consideration.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Agreement Resolution Number 45 of 2022, authorizing a second amendment to the rental agreement with Keuga Community College for the use of Falcon Park. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Agreement Resolution 45 of 2022, whereas the city owns a multipurpose facility located at 130 North Division Street, Auburn, for, used for athletic and other functions named Falcon Park. And whereas on October 11, 2018, the Auburn City Council passed Agreement Resolution 140 of 2018, which authorized a rental agreement with Community, Keuga Community College. And whereas the rental agreement allows CCC to use Falcon Park for its collegiate sports teams, including baseball, softball, soccer, and lacrosse, in exchange, the city receives rents to help cover the costs it incurred in renovating Falcon Park to make it a usable year-round, multipurpose athletic complex. And whereas at the time the agreement was executed, it was expressly agreed that all of the project costs were based upon estimates, and that the terms of rent would be subject to adjustment based upon actual numbers received. Whereas in 2019, the parties entered into a first amendment for the sole purpose of adjusting the frequency of rental payments from annually to monthly. And whereas now the parties would like to enter into a second amendment for the purpose of adjusting the monthly rents set forth in paragraph three to reflect the actual share of costs owed by CCC to the city. And whereas the Board of Directors of CCC have agreed to the terms proposed in Amendment Number Two, which is attached here to and incorporated herein, now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby approve Amendment Number Two to the rental agreement with Keuga Community College, which is attached here to and incorporated herein. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents in order to carry out the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Dugger, do you have anything further to add?
No, again, this was, as the resolution states, right from the beginning, we knew that the, the total cost of the project was somewhat fluid, so once the project essentially wrapped up and was completed, this is just an adjustment to make sure that the college is paying their agreed-upon share, based on use of the facility, what aspects of it they'll be utilizing. It takes into account the debt service, it takes into account moving forward, it takes into account maintenance of the facility, which includes even personnel costs and things like that, moving ahead.
Thank you. Discussions or questions for Mr. Dugger? Counselor LaCastro?
Are they up to date on the rent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or overall, are yourself and staff is all happy with this relationship in the way that it's played out?
Yeah, it's been, it's been working well. The facility, as I've mentioned before, is probably getting utilized more than it's ever been utilized. The relationship with the, the new operation of the Double Days has been good. As a matter of fact, we're going to have a resolution before you to update that agreement with the Double Days. Community use of the facility has increased, and when I say community, not just the city of Auburn, but regionally, there is a lot of interest in the facility, and it's become a, a local attraction of sorts, so.
Good. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution Number 46 of 2022, authorizing the implementation and funding for the Lake Ave Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Castro, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Agreement Resolution 46 of 2022, whereas a project for the Lake Ave Bridge Rehabilitation over the Owasco River, bid number 2207050 in the city of Auburn for the Bridge New York 2021 Program, pin number 375693, is eligible for funding under Title 23 U.S. Code as amended that calls for the apportionment of the cost of such program to be borne at the ratio of ninety-five percent federal funds and five percent non-federal funds. Whereas on December 15, 2021, the city of Auburn received a notice of award from the New York Bridge New York Program in the amount of $4,662,410 towards the Lake Ave Bridge project, which has an estimated project cost of $4,907,800. And whereas the city of Auburn will complete all design and inspection phases, as well as award bids for construction of the project. And whereas the city of Auburn desires to advance the project by making a commitment of one hundred percent of the first instance payments of the total project cost in the amount of $4,907,800 for all design phases, one through six, right-of-way incidentals and acquisition if necessary, construction and construction supervision and inspection phases for the project. Now therefore be it resolved, that the city council does resolve to approve the project and authorizes the mayor of the city to pay one hundred percent of the cost of all design, right-of-way, and construction phase work for the project or portions thereof, with the understanding that the qualified cost may be eligible for federal aid, state aid, or reimbursement from the Bridge New York Funds. Further resolved, the sum of $4,907,800 is hereby made available from the city's general fund to the Lake Ave Bridge Capital Account, number HA5110440KW, to cover the cost of participation in the above phases of the project. Be it further resolved, the city of Auburn Council does hereby agree that the city shall be responsible for all costs of the project which exceed the amount of federal aid, state aid, or New York Bridge Program funding awarded to the city of Auburn. And it is further resolved that the event, in the event that the project costs are not covered by federal aid, state aid, or New York Bridge funding, or if the project exceeds the amount appropriated above, the city of Auburn City Council shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amount immediately upon notification by the New York State Department of Transportation. Be it further resolved, the city council of the city of Auburn hereby agrees that construction of the project shall begin no later than 24 months after award, and that the construction phase of the project shall be completed within 30 months. And it is further resolved, the mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, and reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or state aid with the New York State DOT in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and the city of Auburn's funding of the project costs, and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid-eligible project costs, and all project costs within appropriations therefore that are not so eligible. And it be it further resolved, a certified copy of the resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. Be it further resolved, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Lupien? Clerk, please call the roll.
Agreement Resolution 46 of 2022, Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution Number 47 of 2022, authorizing an agreement for engineering and design services for the Lake Ave over Owasco River Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Agreement Resolution 47, whereas on December 15, 2021, the city was notified by New York State DOT that it had been awarded a Bridge New York 2021 grant in the amount of $4,662,410 for the rehabilitation of the Lake Ave Bridge. Whereas the Bridge New York 2021 grant provides ninety-five percent of the total estimated cost of the project, which is $4,907,800. Whereas on May 5, 2022, the Auburn City Council passed an agreement resolution authorizing the master agreement and funding for the Lake Ave over the Owasco Outlet Bridge Rehabilitation Project. And whereas the project is eligible for funding under Title 23 U.S. Code as amended by the New York State Department of Transportation Bridge New York 2021 Program that calls for the apportionment of the costs of such program to be borne at the ratio of ninety-five percent federal funds and five percent non-federal funds. Whereas the city council authorized to approve the project and authorized the city of Auburn to pay, in the first instance, one hundred percent of all project costs. And whereas it is now necessary to obtain consulting services for the design phases one through six of the project. And whereas after conducting the consultant selection process, CNS engineers was chosen as our consultant to provide design, engineering, and construction inspection services for the project. And whereas CNS engineers has agreed to provide engineering services for design phases one through six in the amount of $550,000. And whereas this amount is eligible for ninety-five percent federal reimbursement totaling Now therefore be it resolved, the CNS engineers will be retained to provide engineering services for design phases one through six for the Lake Ave over the Owasco Outlet Bridge Rehabilitation Project for a sum of $550,000. Be it further resolved, the city of Auburn shall be responsible to pay, in the first instance, one hundred percent of the federal and non-federal share of the costs in the amount of $550,000. Be resolved, that all eligible design costs shall be submitted for ninety-five percent federal reimbursement. And it is further resolved, the mayor is authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, and reimbursement requests for federal aid and state aid on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Discussions or questions for Mr. Lupien? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution Number 48 of 2022, authorizing change order to Crane Hogan Structural Systems, Inc. for the State Street Public Plaza Project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Agreement Resolution 48 of 2022, whereas on March 18, 2021, the city council passed Award Resolution 37 of 2021, awarding construction of the State Street Public Plaza to Crane Hogan Structural Systems in the amount of $1,133,113.50. And whereas the city of Auburn was awarded funding for the build-out of the State Street Public Plaza in the amount of $1 million through the Downtown Revitalization Initiative Program, March 18, 2021, and $178,114 from the Emerson Foundation, accepted by council on July 1, 2021. And whereas Auburn City Council also authorized bond ordinance number three of 2021 in the amount of $400,000 to finance costs for the project on March 18, 2021. And whereas a change order in the amount of $273,637 involving improvements to the State Street corridor is now necessary to complete the project and extend the useful life of the State Street corridor. And whereas the project construction contingency budget of $10,000 is necessary to cover field change requests during construction to be approved by construction administrator Bergman, architects, engineers, and planners, and the city of Auburn staff. Whereas city staff is recommending a total project change order of $283,637 to complete the construction of the State Street Public Plaza. And whereas the change order work will involve removal of pavers, replacement with exposed aggregate concrete in walkways and colored concrete in the roadway, landscape improvements, and additional repairs, and/or replacement of concrete sidewalks and brick pavers in the State Street corridor. And whereas the Department of Planning and Economic Development, Department of Municipal Utilities, and Bergman have reviewed and support the cost and scope of the change order, now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby award the change order in the amount of $283,637 to Crane Hogan Structural Systems Incorporated for the State Street Public Plaza Project. And be it further resolved, the cost of resolution in the total amount of $283,637 is to be charged to the State Street Public Plaza Capital Account, number HA8672440SS. And be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Ms. Haynes from Planning Department is here.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good. Just wondering, why didn't that go in the original bid?
So we had come back to the council for the bond for $400,000. As we were contemplating finishing the plaza, we were also noticing the state of the street in front of the plaza. And when we came back to the council, we were estimating that we would need about $400,000 to make sure we could do those improvements in the street in front, landscaping, button it all up, and then be done in that area. As we were going through the design, we were interested in pulling the design from the plaza out into the street, and as we were talking about how to procure that, we worked with finance to work on a change order with the original contractor that we've been working with. So we always contemplated doing the street last year, we just didn't know how it was going to happen, whether we were going to bid it out separately or do a change order with the original contractor.
It just seems that work that goes, that ties in with everything else should have just been one big bid for everything, and now we're probably paying more since everything is up with the change order, but nothing we can do about it now.
Well, we're pleased that we are staying within the bond that we originally discussed with you back in March of 2021. We are not asking for any additional funds, and we're already approved by the council from both the DRI, the Emerson Foundation, and the bond. So we're within the budget that we originally had anticipated for the street as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes, Ms. Haynes, I'm wondering, how far does it go across the street? So what's the, the area which will have this affect?
Right, so what we're going to do is we are going to start at Genesee Street and go all the way down to Dill Street. We are going to mill and pave from Genesee down to where, if you're familiar with the brick pavers that are in a circular pattern there.
Yeah.
We're going to mill and pave to that point, and then after those, down to Dill Street. We're going to replace the brick pavers with concrete, with patterning that matches the plaza, inside the plaza.
Okay, and because that has been a concern by a couple constituents because of bricks missing, bricks, so this should take care of that throughout the whole area?
Yes, it should take care of that. I was talking to the manager today about, we need to make sure that we have, you know, a good maintenance plan with sealing the concrete and things like that, because it's going to take a beating with salt, and we all know that here. So, you know, we'll work on that to, to make sure it lasts a good long time. We also have been diligent about, we understand that while we have the street closed, we need to make sure that pedestrian access is there. That's going to be a challenge with the design that we've had, but we've worked on that with the contractor. We have a couple businesses on the east side of the street that we have concerns about maintaining access, but we've talked about different things like ramps and over the concrete. concrete, you know, while it's curing and things like that, to make sure they can maintain access to their businesses. So, we're, we're working on that. We appreciate their patience with us. We've been there a long time, and we hope to get out of their way early this summer.
It's coming along beautifully, by the way.
It's really taking shape. For a while, it was kind of like, it doesn't look any different than it's looked, but now you can see it's rising out of the ground and looks really nice.
That's great, thank you.
Councillor LaCastro?
Is there a completion date?
We are working on June thirtieth for both. We have been asked by Nash's to make sure we're done before their sidewalk sale the third week of July. So, that is our plan.
Councillor Kent?
Just have a question, is there an event planned, like a kickoff?
Oh, you know, there's going to be a ribbon cutting.
Counselor, now I know that we'll have our usual thing, but yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, I know that there's events planned, you know, I, we, we have been asked by DPW staff around programming to, because I know that they're, they're looking at that and wanting to see when we'd be available. You know, we're, we're still trying to work through that so that we can give them good information.
Thank you.
We, we mentioned the plaza, and it's, it's taken longer than we originally thought. And, and I understand that there's several contributing factors to that. The same contractor is also working on the parking garage, and that's taken longer than we originally anticipated. Part of that is because the scope of work is, is increased. But as, I guess, many contractors are saying, you know, supply chain issues, COVID issues, those are two projects that, while we don't like to see things take longer than they're supposed to, we can kind of work around that. This, this portion in my mind, we can't work around that, like, it's got to be done. There, there's businesses there that rely on, on that throughput, and it's, it's not fair to them. Do you have any capacity concerns with this contractor? Because I do, to be honest with you.
So, we have talked through that. We were really diligent about, in our meeting with them, talking through schedule, we pushed them to get their numbers to us because we wanted to be on this agenda instead of waiting till March nineteenth. We anticipate that they will be starting and be working both sides of things, both the roadway and the plaza at the same time. I understand your concerns about capacity, we're wishing that we were done with this sooner as well. I'm confident that they have a good plan in place to be complete when we want them to be complete.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Kent.
Yes.
Councillor Genatino.
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy.
Yes.
Councillor LaCastro.
Yes.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution number forty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing a change order to Popley Design Group for the State Street Public Plaza Project. Do we have a sponsor? Councillor Kent, seconded by Councillor LaCastro.
Agreement Resolution forty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, whereas on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Auburn City Council authorized Agreement Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-one, which awarded Popley Design Group professional services related to construction inspection services for the State Street Public Plaza Project in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. And whereas pursuant to bond ordinance number three of two thousand twenty-one, the city council authorized the expenditure of funds for the construction and inspection phases of the State Street Public Plaza. And whereas project scope of work was increased to include additional construction time associated with necessary repairs along the State Street Corridor, and a change order to Popley Design Group is necessary to perform the required construction inspection service. Now, whereas the change order to the agreement with Popley in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars is required to cover additional professional services costs for construction work extending through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two for the project. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby award the change order in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to Popley Design Group for additional professional services related to the State Street Public Plaza. Be it further resolved, the cost of the resolution in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars shall be charged to the State Street Public Plaza Project Capital Account HA eight-six-seven-two-four-four-zero-S-S. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to execute any and all necessary agreements and reimbursement requests on behalf of the city for the project.
Discussion or questions? Councillor LaCastro?
Do you foresee any more change orders on this job before completion?
No, we, we are within our budget. We are going to be done with this and out of everybody's hair there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Kent.
Yes.
Councillor Genatino.
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy.
Yes.
Councillor LaCastro.
Yes.
Carry.
Moving on to other business from the council, listed is final council input due to city manager on the city budget. Is there any input from council, the manager and staff? Hearing done. Is there any other business from the council?
I just have two quick items. I meant to mention in the reports from members of council, myself, city manager, and several members of staff that are in attendance tonight, attended the annual Chamber of Commerce Awards luncheon yesterday at the Springside. I just want to acknowledge all the award winners. It's always a reaffirmation of what a great community we have, and, and great businesses and individuals in this community. It was nice to see everybody together. I also realized that after two and a half years of a pandemic, I really missed cheese souffle from the Springside. And, and the other thing I wanted to bring up, this afternoon, I was walking back to my office from, from lunch, I encountered, encountered an individual on the street who was clearly in distress, and it was from afar, and I, I called Chief Slaton immediately, and he was familiar with the situation. This same individual had had some encounters with Auburn Police Department today. And the reason I'm bringing this up is this, this individual, the police department responded multiple times, brought this individual to different agencies in the city. And I'm not going to mention those agencies publicly, because I, I'm not doing this to call anybody out. But unfortunately, this, this individual was released back out to the public multiple times. And it really, in my conversations with Chief Slaton, it really puts Auburn Police Department in a, in a precarious situation, because there's really only so much they can do. Every time they respond to a situation like that, especially if it's a repeat issue with the same person, there's this possibility that it escalates, becomes a dangerous situation for the police and for that person. I bring this up because in my conversation with Chief Slaton, he was a little frustrated because what, what more can they do? And the answer is really nothing. I, I would like, if, if you don't mind, maybe bringing this up at the staff meeting on Monday, and seeing if there's anything he needs from us, outreach to these partner agencies in the community to express our concerns, how we can maybe better handle these situations when they arise. I just don't want it to go unnoticed, that this happened and just chalk it up, this, you know, there's nothing we can do about it.
So, councillor, to that point, next week, we actually already have a meeting set up with Kiwi County Social Services Department, which oversees mental health, I believe, or is associated with mental health as well in the community, along with the police department, the fire department, and the ambulance, to talk about just that, and the impact that we have on each other, to learn a little bit more about what their challenges are, what their regulations are, what they can do, what they can't do. I think sometimes we have expectations of their organization that may not be realistic given the regulations they have to operate under, so I want to understand their situation a little bit better, and see if we can't work towards some more collaboration to try to deal with some of these things, to get folks the programs and assistance they need. And I had a similar conversation today, just before this meeting, with April Miles, who's here with us today from East Hill, along those same lines. And, you know, we know, East Hill's always, you know, late for the last couple of years, been a good partner to the city, and we were talking about different ways that we can potentially partner to deal with some of these issues. So, your point is right on point, we're, we're actually already working on it.
That's great thinking. And again, I want to reiterate, I'm not in any way trying to call anybody out. I think everybody's being asked to do more with less, I think everybody's stretched extremely thin, I think that COVID has exasperated underlying issues, but I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that there's that collaboration going on, so thank you. Anything else? Open up our second public to be heard. At this time, is there anybody else wishing to be heard? We'll close the public to be heard. Do we have a request for executive session?
Yes, councillor, we have one item we need to update council on, Assistant Corporation Council Garland will be doing that under Attorney Frank.
Very good. Anybody else for executive session? Any other items? Do we have a motion for executive session? Councillor Kent, seconded by Councillor LaCastro. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Executive session, six forty-five P.M. Councillor Kent.
Yes.
Councillor Genatino.
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy.
Yes.
Councillor LaCastro.
Yes.
We'll be in recess for executive session. Thank you.
Dave.
Can you get a computer?
Yeah.
Jason, tell us, tell us kid, I can't find the price, I can't even find the JCB.
Tell us kid?
Yeah, they, they don't even have a, a, a yellow page, which I've been over to the JCB.